Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. Today is Monday, August 12, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order. Board members will take a motion to adopt the agendas presented. Mr. Harrison made the motion. Mr. Walter made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 7-0. I'd like to thank our deputies who are here tonight, Sergeant Vernon and Deputy Wilson. Thank you for being here. Next, we will proceed with recognitions as we normally do at our business meeting. So the first item is for 3.01 is the North Carolina Career Guidance Professional of the Year. Welcome, Mr. Rusty Parker.
I'd like for Brian Elliott to please come forward. You get front and center. On the X. You have a spot. Each year, the North Carolina Association of Career and Technical Education recognizes career guidance professionals across the state who have excelled in their efforts to help students find their career direction. The Career Guidance Professional of the Year Award recognizes school counselors and career development coordinators who have demonstrated a commitment to connecting students with opportunities for success that have shown innovation in career exploration and development and have advocated for CTE as a viable option for all students. Each region selects a career guidance professional who then competes for the state award. At the CTE Summer Conference each July, the state award winner is announced. And this summer, Brian Elliott from Central Cabarrus High School was selected as the North Carolina Career Guidance Professional of the Year. Congratulations, Brian. And if Ms. Kelly Klutz, our chief financial officer, would please come up to the front. Under Ms. Klutz's leadership, our finance department has once again received certificates of excellence and achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Business Officers International. These awards recognize excellence and outstanding achievement in governmental accounting and financial reporting. The awards also speak to the outstanding leadership and management of Ms. Klutz. We congratulate Ms. Klutz and her team on these accomplishments and thank them for all of their commitment.
For some reason, I was thinking those were going to be on the consent. So we have the July 8 combined work session and business meeting and the July 15 meeting to be approved. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Harrison made the motion. Mr. Sheemaker made the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. And then we'll move right into board chair and superintendent comments. And I just wanted to thank my colleagues who have been able to help with the Channel 9 school tools so far. We did our two big Walmart collection days. It was a collection in Harrisburg by another group on Saturday. And we don't have the totals yet, but we feel like we're already way over and we still have another nine days for the collection sites, of which Mrs. Grimsley's store is one of those. So we're looking forward to really blowing our record last year out of the water. And you will all be drafted to deliver to schools, so just wait for your phone call or email. And we'll let you know. First of all, we're going to get things sorted out for schools and have them ready, and then we'll let you know. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, our fair's coming up.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that we've got the county fair coming up on September the 6th through the 14th. And if you haven't seen, if you've got any children, tell them to color and they can win some tickets. And this is in your paper and it's open to elementary school grades, elementary kindergarten through five. And they can mail it or deliver it to the independent tribune through September the 4th and they can win tickets. So look for that in your paper. Also, if you want to enter something into the fair, all entries have to be in by August the 21st, by 12 noon. And to fill out the application, you go to cabarruscountyfair.com and you can get the application. You need to fill that out. For entries, you want to enter into the fair. And then the entries, you deliver those to the fair on September the 3rd and September the 4th. And September the 3rd from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. September the 4th from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. If you want to put entries into the fair. And children, that's a great way for you to get some money. So go home and get your children to make things and enter them in the fair. So thanks a lot.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. I also wanted to mention that, just something I came upon yesterday at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, and that is another Eagle Scout project, beautifying the grounds. So we've had a number of those in the past, and if any of you are aware, on the live audience here or those watching, are aware of Eagle Scouts who might need to do projects, we welcome those with Cabarrus County and they would work with the principal of that school and then whoever else from the department it would affect. So it looks like a great project going on. Like I said, I just happened to come across it when I was doing something else yesterday. So I appreciate that. So Dr. Lauter, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We only have a couple more weeks before the new school year begins for the majority of our students. Today, we welcomed all of the new teachers that are new to the profession. We welcomed about 150 teachers today at J.M. Robinson. Be sure to visit our back-to-school website for information about the start of school that begins for most students on August 26. Students at our early colleges began their new school year last week on August the 8th, so we wish them well as they get started. So both of our early colleges are back in school, and as you know, Wolf Meadow began about three weeks ago. Ahead of welcoming students to school, we're welcoming new teachers and staff members of the district this week. So on Wednesday, it won't just be new teachers to the profession, it'll also be anyone that's new to our district. One of the highlights of the week will be a special celebration luncheon this Wednesday. Want to thank our human resources department for all of their work in planning and coordinating all the activities for new teachers and new teachers to our district. And thank you also to the many community partners and sponsors who've donated goods and services to make this a very special event. We will celebrate our summer graduates on August 15 with a special ceremony here at the Education Center. Want to say congratulations to the members of the class of 2019 for their diligence and commitment. I am pleased to share that Cabarrus County Schools received a grant from the United States Department of Agriculture Food and Nutrition Service for $142,000, thanks to Leigh Ann Haveli of the Curriculum Department who led and worked on that. The grant will be used to create a K-12 gardening curriculum at our 10 STEM schools. The curriculum will cover the gardening process from planting to production, including the technology used in the process. And last, we just want to say this is the final week for the free summer meals that are offered by our school nutrition department. Children 18 and younger are eligible, no ID or reservations are required. Visit www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us/freesummermeals for locations. It's also time to apply for free reduced meals for the new school year. Approximately 40% of our 33,000 students are on free and reduced lunch, so we certainly encourage them to apply for that. Go to www.lunchapplication.com to apply online for fast, free, and secure processing or to get a form at your child's school. Applications are valid for one year, so you'll need to apply again even if you qualified last year. You can contact the school nutrition program office at 704-260-5500 if you have any questions. And again, we just want to welcome everyone and say that we're excited for August 26 when we start up the new school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Okay, I just want to ask Mr. Basileis, is there anyone organizing the speakers with the number we have tonight?
No, so we're not using a number system tonight. We're just, you're just going to be calling them out.
Okay.
We have one person in the overflow room that I'm going to pull in in a few minutes.
Okay.
Just everything you have in your hand.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to announce the first three speakers, just so you can be ready so we can keep the rotation going and not lose, I'll say, travel time. The first person is Mayor Scott Paget, Dr. Grace Galloway, and then Christine Lovelace. So Mayor, if you would step forward, you get your first three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Board, thanks for letting me speak.
Okay, we might need you to turn that mic on on that side. There we go.
All right. Don't start my time yet.
Yeah.
Practice this. I've been very impressed with the enthusiasm of the people that supported and still support keeping Beverly Hills School open and replacing it with a new school. And the staff that have every day for the past two years put the children first and continued to do their job. This is the kind of thing that we really need to celebrate, all this support for a public school. How sad it would be if you were going to close a school and no one cared. And all of this has been going on with, in my opinion, an unnecessary cloud hanging over that school. I came to Cabarrus County 50 years ago and my first teaching job was at Long Elementary School. Then I went to Colton Webb as assistant principal, then backed to Long as the principal of Long Exceptional School, and then principal of Beverly Hills. I've served on at least three school bond committees to raise money for new schools. There have been six other schools, such as AT Allen and others, that were old, needed replacing, and they've been replaced on exactly the same site, such as WR Odell, or at a site a stone's throw away. Beverly Hills people wonder, why not us? Now, I understand that some of you have toured Beverly Hills recently and have been told about the presence of asbestos. Well, I also know that several months ago, I observed that it was suggested after the children are moved out and bussed out, it was discussed using that same building, the Beverly Hills building, for school offices, or to move students from the Glenn Center. So either the school is safe or it's not safe. And I'll remind you that these buildings that we're talking about all had exactly the same conditions as Beverly Hills does now. So why are Beverly Hills being treated differently? Pitting a 1% supplement against teachers is something I've never heard of in my 30 years of education or 70 years of life. It's not fair to anybody. I know tonight is a big night. I know Mr. Walters has probably been under a lot of pressure. And you've expressed in the past your discontent with the process and stated that Beverly Hills should be replaced, but should be on the construction plan. Well, tonight's the night. I hope everybody will unite tonight and let these precious students go back to school at Beverly Hills this year without this cloud hanging over their head. I hope you will follow the advice of the architect that you hired and build a new school at Beverly Hills, place it on the construction plan, and I hope for a unanimous vote. Remove the vacate. Let's start this thing over. Let's get it over. Let's restore confidence. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Dr. Gracie Galloway and I represent the Asian American Pacific Islanders of North I want to make these comments, it's important. So what is more important to us as a community? How much money we have or spend or the life of a child? The experts all say that mega schools are a big mistake. The National Association of School Principals concluded in a report that making smaller schools was an essential part of making them better. In the wake of Columbine school shooting, Professor James Garabina, Garberina of Cornell, an expert on adolescent crime, said that if he could do one thing to stop violence, it would be to ensure that our children are not in schools bigger than 400 to 500 students. Bullying is a problem, and the children that are victims are those that do not fit within the description of jocks or artists or nerds. They are essentially nonentities in their own lives. And the common thread describing the kids who are school shooters is that they are loners or weird, but they have fallen through the cracks in our community system. In mega schools, we all know this, there is inevitably a critical mass of kids that just do not fit. In our instant gratification society, only the ones that are perceived to excel are rewarded. Others that are not considered excellent become disaffected and depressed, and that child comes to school with a gun. In small community schools, that disaffected child would be identified by the school counselor or the teacher who is not overwhelmed by the number of children in their orbit. While school size may be just one contributing factor that experts have connected to school violence, it is nonetheless a factor that can absolutely be changed. As a community, it is incumbent upon us to serve our community in the best way possible. Studies show that smaller schools have higher graduation rates, produce more psychologically stable children, have less truancy rates, lower violence, and vandalism rates. And these same studies show that children in smaller schools are less inclined to misbehave, throw tantrums, or be rude. The general consensus among these experts simply confirmed without any doubt that small schools perform better with both safety and academics. And there is no evidence that consolidated schools save money. Teachers report feeling more committed to their students and are less overwhelmed, and smaller schools have greater academic gains for individuals. And as for equality, which is where AAPI steps in, closing down a minority-majority school and placing these children in a mega school would only lead to an ever greater sense of isolation as they now would be a striking minority in one large school. The federal government has issued $94 million a year in grants for small learning communities or SLCs. School districts may use these grants to create smaller schools. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation has committed more than $1.8 billion, that's with a B, dollars dedicated to the creation of 1,500 small schools around the country. Michael and Susan Dell Foundation has committed an additional $32 million to further their efforts, particularly in urban areas. There are funds available. The Gates Foundation also sponsored a study of 24 small schools to look at their efforts and found that because the students felt their teachers knew them and their capabilities, the students wanted to excel. The same study found that students in smaller learning communities actually increased their English scores. Year after year, the top 100 schools in the nation are small schools. It is easier to spot a stranger in a small school, and security and discipline are easier to maintain. Members of the Board, this must not be a zero-sum game where we sacrifice the safety and the well-being of our children over teacher salaries. Surely, we can have both. Thank you.
And before our next speaker starts, following her are Brian Floyd, Scott Medlin, and Jimmy Turelli, if you can be ready. So, welcome.
This is nerve-wracking. Okay. My name is Christine Lovelace. I entered kindergarten at Beverly Hills Elementary School. Thank you. In 1989 and completed 5th grade in 1995. Attending Beverly Hills Elementary provided me an environment that allowed me to develop lifelong relationships with my teachers, my principal, and my peers, many of whom are here right now. Tonight, I am asking the school board that Beverly Hills Elementary remain open until a replacement school is funded and construction begins. I reiterate the point that established schools within communities, no matter how big or how small, are so valuable to the fabric of a city and its inhabitants. They create a sense of pride and connection between the generations. I also attended Concord Middle and Concord High School. I went to undergrad at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, then obtained my master's degree at UNC Greensboro. I currently work in Concord as a speech-language pathologist for a pediatric private practice, serving children birth to five from all walks of life. My husband is originally from Charlotte and currently works as a real estate attorney here in Cabarrus County. We are both excited about the development in and around Concord and wholeheartedly support growth and progress, but not at the expense of losing gems like small community schools. When thinking about starting a family and where we wanted to establish our roots, we chose Concord. It sometimes still surprises me today, especially after the number of times growing up and in college, that I said, "I will never move back to Concord." But we did. We moved home to Concord to be close to our family and to be near so many people in this community who feel like family. We wanted our son to grow up in a town that has a wonderful combination of honoring traditions and legacies while still moving forward to grow in innovative ways. I was shocked when I first heard the plan to close Beverly Hills. It was literally the complete opposite of what I thought I was coming home to. It is discouraging and frustrating that there's a consideration of closing a school that had an impact on so many people, people who are so active and positive change in this community, who specifically moved back here so that their children could have a similar experience and feel that same support. Ultimately, to me, elected officials on every level have the responsibility to reflect the desires of their constituents. I want to live in a place where I feel that decisions are being made for the overall best long-term benefit to the city and the county as a whole. I implore you to make every effort to save this school. Beverly Hills is a great example of this mixing of past, present, and future, with the STEM curriculum there that continues to yield excellent results and grants for expansion. I'm grateful for this opportunity to voice my opinion that Beverly Hills Elementary should be saved. I am grateful the experience that I had here. Before I close, I would like to extend a huge and heartfelt thank you to the team that has worked so hard to save Beverly Hills. You are all an inspiration and I appreciate all of your efforts very, very much. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I don't envy you for all this that you're having to deal with and go through. I know it's a big responsibility, and there's a lot more to it than what we first look at when we start looking at this. But let me introduce myself to those of you I don't know. My name's Brian Floyd, and I'm a product of community schools right here in Cabarrus County. I grew up, I went to Beverly Hills Elementary School. Scott Paget was my principal, and I still talk to him every day, probably. I can't get away from him. I went to CMS as a minor, and I went to CHS as a spider, and I'll be a spider till the day I die. I'm an Eagle Scout. I went on to graduate from the Citadel class of 2004, and from there, I went on to serve my country as a combat veteran. The 82nd Airborne as an infantry paratrooper in Iraq from 2004 to 2008. I came home and immediately came straight back to my community schools, became a teacher at Concord High School from 2008 until 2014, where I was a finalist for Teacher of the Year. I didn't win it, so I quit. Or something close to that. Now, I'm a mortgage officer with Fairway Independent Mortgage, and I run a business right here in Concord. And I could do that in Charlotte, the money's in Charlotte, but I run it right here in Concord in my community where I want to be, where I want my family to be. So I tell you all that to tell you that, again, I am a product of community schools, and I'm a product of these community schools, and they're the reason I am where I am today. I owe a lot of who I am to these schools in Cabarrus County. I could come up here and I could quote studies and I could show you graphs and charts. I'm not going to show you anything you don't know. You know more about this than I do. None of that stuff captures what's real about community schools and what matters about community schools here, too. It's more than a statistic. It doesn't fit in a box in an Excel spreadsheet. It's who we are, and it's what makes us different. This is a very special place, Cabarrus County. America's finest institution is the public school, and it's what sets us apart from the rest of the world. And so we have a terrible responsibility to maintain that greatness. This community is special and unique. These community schools set us apart, and what we're talking about is community schools as an institution where we live, because it's not everywhere. I work in the real estate industry, and people move here from other places to be here, to be around these schools. They work in Charlotte and they move here. So there's a lot of reasons to, there's a lot of reasons not to. Again, you know that stuff more than I do, but everywhere I turn, I see great reasons to keep these schools. And everybody here in front of you now is a product of community schools, and everything you've been dealing with is a product of community schools. And it's how important it is to people. And if it wasn't important, we wouldn't be here. So I'll wrap up and say, I said at the beginning that I don't envy you, but I actually do envy you, because you have a chance to stand up and do something right and make a real difference. And if you can't get behind that, I don't know what you're in for.
So we have Scott Medlin now, and I'll just say thank you for your service, Mr. Floyd, and also to you, Mr. Medlin.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, good evening, Cabarrus County School Board members. My name is Scott Medlin. I was born and raised here in Concord. I attended Beverly Hills, Concord Middle, and I graduated from Concord High. I'm a family man. I've been married for nine years, and my wife and I have two very energetic young boys. They are one and three. So the fact that you're allowing me to speak got me away from cleaning toys this evening. I appreciate that. But this matter means a lot to me, and that's exactly why I'm here, because I'm a byproduct of Beverly Hills. Research shows that the first eight years of a person's life are when most development occurs, so we have to be absolutely careful as to which schools are closed down. And because Beverly Hills has had such an amazing track record of producing well-rounded and educated students, so why punish a school and a community because of old age? I understand the building is old, and there are definitely costs associated with that, but there are much higher costs that are going to be put on those kids if you ship them to a bigger school. If you think that we are opposing shutting down Beverly Hills just because it's, you know, been there a while for us, and that's not the case. You can't fix something that isn't broken. As long as Beverly Hills is in the location it is, it will be a great opportunity for teachers, a diverse population of students, and for Cabarrus County schools. There have been other community schools to have their old buildings torn down or shut down, and yet new buildings were built in the same location. So why is Beverly Hills different? And when I say Beverly Hills, I'm talking about the school and the community, because for years, they've worked hand-in-hand together. It was at Beverly Hills that I learned about communication and cooperation and service to my community and my country. And it was in 5th grade history class at Beverly Hills that I learned I wanted to serve my country. Cabarrus County Schools motto is engaging minds and shaping futures. Well, my future was shaped by my time at Beverly Hills. When I did, in fact, serve my country in Iraq as a United States Marine in 2003 and 2005, it was my Beverly Hills community that supported me when I was over there, both times. I beg you, please make the right decision, which is to keep Beverly Hills open. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, so Jimmy Turelli is next, and then the following three are Brittany Degenhart, Joe Plummer, and David Burpo. So do we have Jimmy Turelli? No, he is not here. No, he is not here. So Brittany Dagenhart.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Brittany Dagenhart. I grew up in Concord. I attended Beverly Hills. My time at Beverly Hills did so much more than prime me for the next chapter in my educational journey. It gave me, in my youngest formative years, a sense of safety, a sense of place, and honestly, perhaps most importantly, a sense of extended family. I didn't just bond with that given-years classroom teacher. I knew the entire staff in the front office, and it wasn't because I was in trouble all the time. I shared a cheer line with our custodian. I still keep in touch with my bus driver. I reaped all the benefits, and there were many, of attending our neighborhood school, filled with people who called me by name and cared deeply about me as a student and as a person. I've actually recently moved my family from a different school district back to this specific section of Cabarrus County to give my son the opportunity to attend Beverly Hills, because I know firsthand the profound positive impact and excellent educational experience that comes from attending the small neighborhood school. It's more than the tradition. It's more than just the sentiments. It is the unmatched benefit of a neighborhood school sized appropriately to meet the needs of all of its students and deeply rooted in and supported by a close-knit community that only wants what's best for our kids. The outpouring of support for Beverly Hills that has been showcased in the last couple of years while this decision has been on the table is truly incredible, and this is the support system that Beverly Hills has in its corner, day in, day out, school year after school year. Don't take a school out of a community that supports it so wholeheartedly. Save Beverly Hills Elementary School so that it can positively shape the lives of future generations, just as it did mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Plummer.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Joe Plummer. I grew up in Concord, went to Beverly Hills, went to Concord Middle, went to Concord High School. Brian, you went to Beverly Hills, too, right? You're a lot older than me. And... True, though? But I have passion for Beverly Hills. Went away for seven years of school, came back, and then my wife and I, my wife's from another continent, she's there right now. When we were looking at schools, places to buy, I said, "I gotta be in Beverly Hills or Brown McAllister." That was just it for me. So when my wife, our five-year-old's starting our Brown McAllister, my wife started looking at the school last year or two, and she just became enchanted with it, same as when we went to Beverly Hills. Friends of mine that live in Beverly Hills, they're already talking about, already made moves to, in fear of going homeschool, private school, charter school, and their hearts are in the public school. Y'all have a very tough decision to make, but this school was very important to me, Beverly Hills. One of my principals was Scott Paget, the other was Max Harris, and at the time, we all went to First Baptist Church, and it was already strict enough at First Baptist Church, but having your principals at church there didn't help, couldn't get away with anything. But one of my best friends, a gentleman named Rob Williams, most of y'all are probably familiar with him, he wanted to be here tonight, but he can't because he's the president of the Boys Club, and he's made it well, he's Rusty Wallace's CEO, but this is his second tenure being the president of the Boys Club, and he's leading up their fundraising efforts. So I texted him today, and he said, "Yes, you can plug my name." But when Rob and I run in the morning, Brian actually runs a lot faster than us, and he's in with another group. He gets up even earlier, correct, Brian? But Rob and I, whenever it's our decision to lead where we're going to run, we always go down Church Street, and we feel this magnetic pull to Beverly Hills, and we'll do a lap around the school. I don't think we're supposed to be there at 5:30 in the morning, but that's what we'll do. And the group of other guys that are from other places, they say, "We know you're going to Beverly Hills." Same thing when I'm driving. I'm on phone call Bluetooth with clients. There is a reason. I'll just pull off a church street, and it takes me totally out of the way, but I'll just do laps around Beverly Hills School. And seeing these parents like Dave Burpo or his wife walking their kids to school, it just means something special, and I don't think that you're going to be able to replicate that going across the interstate to Kannaples. Thank y'all for your time. You have a very tough decision, and I hope that you do not vacate the current Beverly Hills. Thank you.
Okay, next we have David Burpo, and the next three are Ben Robinson, Karen Robinson, and Joseph Stegman. So, welcome.
Good evening. I'm aware that the last two years have been challenging, and you all have had to make difficult decisions. And of course, y'all know me by now, so I'm fully aware, and I'm probably part of the challenges that have been in the way. You were elected to the Board of Education to lead this county and do what's best for education. Education should be your number-one priority in every decision that you make. While not all issues you face have clear solutions, and many are difficult, a leader is one who, out of difficulty, brings opportunity. Tonight, you have the opportunity to show Cabarrus County that you will lead, and do so by placing education and students above all other issues. You have an opportunity tonight to vote for education, not against it. For students exceeding growth expectations, not against it. For an engaged community, not against it. For shorter bus times, not against it. For an enriched learning environment, not against it. For diverse educational opportunities in a growing county, not against it. And for the ideal, not against the ideal. A Board of Education has the duty to advocate for the educational ideal. In 2015, Dr. Louter told us what that ideal was, and you are all familiar with that. And now, we are fortunate to have the opportunity to build back the ideal. I'm asking you all to be leaders tonight. Vote for the ideal, not against it. Your decision tonight should not be influenced by other county projects, such as the courthouse, as some mentioned last week. Instead, your vote should be influenced by students and education, nothing more. I assure you, if you vote for the ideal, you will have a band of passionate community members alongside you advocating for your students. A vote to reverse the vacate and build back a new Beverly Hills is a vote for the ideal, it's not against it. Thank you.
Ben Robinson. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Ben Robinson, and I'd like to thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm currently a licensed geologist at a small environmental consulting firm, and I work in Davidson County, and I drove a long way to get here today through some pretty bad traffic, just to be able to speak about my time as a Cabarrus County School student. The last time I was in this room, it was to be recognized for winning a football state championship after the 2004 football season at Concord High School. Go Spiders! But I'm here to talk to you today about the beginning of my time as a Cabarrus County School student, which was at Beverly Hills Elementary. I think I spent the first two weeks in Ms. Slagel's 4th grade class crying, and it was through the very personal attention of a caring principal and a very motivated guidance counselor that got me through what was the toughest part of my early life. And I came to see what incredible opportunity I had there. And the main thing that mattered to me then was bicycle distance to my friends and classmates. It's important to a young child to develop those relationships inside and outside of the school. And I just wanted to say very briefly that I've just returned from the beach with 10 of my best friends from Concord, many of whom I met for the first time at Beverly Hills Elementary School. I might be the briefest speaker tonight, but I wanted to end with something that I remembered from over 20 years ago, which is Beverly Hills, we sing out your name. Our super-students bring us great fame. Buster Bulldog points us high. Purple and teal, the colors we fly. Thank you very much.
And Karen Robinson.
Good evening. I'm Karen Robinson, his mom, and I live in the Beverly Hills attendance area. I'm also a retired Cabarrus County teacher, having taught Spanish and English as a second language for 17 years at Mount Pleasant High School, and three years as a Title I tutor at Beverly Hills. My family moved here 23 years ago from Charlotte. My husband and I were looking for neighborhood schools with great academics, diversity, and community involvement. We found that with Beverly Hills. Our younger son attended Beverly Hills, and I don't know about you, I don't remember my elementary school song, but it made an impression on him. Our boys received a wonderful public school education and had many memorable experiences. They are successful, kind, and caring adults in their communities. As parents, we couldn't have asked for more. As a reading tutor at Beverly Hills from 2014 to 2017, I had the opportunity to work with amazing educators at Beverly Hills. I saw from the inside how these teachers, administrators, and staff were devoted to their students and worked tirelessly for their success. Now that I'm retired, don't have children or grandchildren in school, why do I care? Beverly Hills continues, "Well, to quote a dear friend and former Cabarrus County teacher and administrator, Mr. Gary Wirt, the reason I care," and I quote, "because having schools that serve specific neighborhoods is vital for maintaining the spirit of the community it serves. It is about pride, tradition, and local connections. These teachers, some of whom are here tonight, these families, but most importantly, these children need and deserve this school." Thank you for your time.
So before you start, Mr. Stegman, I'd like to say the next three speakers are Amanda Cook, Nancy Fries-Faggert, and Diane Norwood. Thank you. May proceed.
Thank you very much for letting me talk this evening. Wow, I don't know how you can think anything but great things about Beverly Hills after listening to everybody and seeing this huge support from the community and listening to the former students. I feel like anything I say is not nearly as important as what they've brought you this evening. My name is Joseph Stegman, and my wife and family, we've lived in Concord and in the Beverly Hills neighborhood since 1987. All three of my children, Emily, Julia, and Theodore, all completed their primary education at Beverly Hills Elementary School. I would kindly ask you to reconsider and support Beverly Hills' future. I really want to just make three points. First, the fact that it's a STEM school and the benefit for STEM education. The second, all the reported benefits of smaller school size. And third, the benefits to our neighborhood. You can see the great support from the community and the value of our homes. Science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM. I'm a developmental pediatrician. Every day in my career, I use these skills, the tenants of genetics, microbiology, anatomy, physiology, all sorts of technology that we use in medicine today, mathematics for calculation of dosages of medications. All of these skills are extremely important in what I do every single day. And I believe that when we have early exposure and introduction into these disciplines, we spark interest, and we open these fields for the children of the 21st century. There have been many reported benefits for smaller school size. Better math scores, better reading scores, improved attendance rate, improved graduation rates, higher rates of involvement by parents, and the list goes on and on. Some of those are supported by good studies, some maybe not so much, some just thoughts. I do want to refer to a study published in the Science Digest in 2006 by the Department of Economics from Harvard University. It was a meta-analysis, highly sophisticated statistical manipulation of numbers in trying to accommodate socioeconomic variations and other factors. In summary, they concluded that math scores were greatly improved and that school attendance was greatly improved. The one thing that would intrigue me was their last paragraph about cost. And though we have always thought larger schools improve cost sharing, and the study suggested that, in fact, the cost was markedly better. Please save our school.
Next, we have Dr. Amanda Cook.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you all so much for this opportunity tonight to speak about supporting Beverly Hills. There are many markers one can use to gauge the success of an elementary school. It can include behavior, attendance, participation, regional recognition, and awards. I realize not all these markers can be measured, and commonly, schools are judged by test scores and are labeled by their test scores. My understanding is that the most recent beginning-of-the-year scores from Beverly Hills and the mid-year benchmarks from the children at Beverly Hills were extremely impressive and a significant improvement when compared to the most recent years. I anticipate the end-of-the-year grades for the 2018 through 2019 will be just as impressive, although I have not seen those scores yet. Beverly Hills has always had excellent scholars, teachers, staff. We've got the same old building. The community hasn't changed. I consider our community to be the neighborhood, as well as the medical center, which is contiguous with Beverly Hills neighborhood. So what variable can explain this improvement in test scores? Really, the only variable that has changed is the introduction of the STEM program in the 2016-2017 school year. Dr. Louter, I credit you with that decision to produce a STEM school at Beverly Hills. I really think that was the missing piece, and it really unified everything and brought it together. I know my own girls have really thrived in the STEM program at Beverly Hills. So many potential careers will require an excellent foundation in STEM studies. I feel this is particularly important for our Title I school student body, and it will give them the best possible chance at upward financial mobility. If Beverly Hills STEM school is closed, there will not be enough STEM schools in our county. Wyancoph just doesn't have enough STEM seats available to accommodate our student body. I have been reassured by Dr. Louter that our school is safe, and I trust Dr. Louter. He says it's safe, and I believe him. So please don't close our school just because it's old. Please don't close a brick-and-mortar school building to transfer our children into trailers at Wyancoph to accommodate them as a STEM seat. While I don't hold a degree in formal education, I've spent 30-plus years in school. I currently train medical students and residents, and I know a quality education when I see one, and I can tell you, that's what we have right now at Beverly Hills, is a quality STEM education. We are succeeding at whatever marker you want to judge us, and I ask that you please keep our school open. Thank you.
Next, we have Nancy Fries-Faggert. Welcome.
Hello. Nelson Mandela said, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children." I stand here tonight to speak on behalf of children. It is wise not to lose sight of what is best for our children, their parents, and the city of Concord. We all want our neighborhood school to live. A Title I STEM school, Beverly Hills students excel academically, giving children of lower socioeconomic status greater advantage. It can also be more attentive to special-needs children, as their caregivers can be more accessible. We want to be put back in the five-year plan and to have the vacate re- We want to be put back in the five-year plan and to have the vacate rescinded. My father, Jayden Fries, feared sectionalism in Cabarrus County. He lived his life with integrity, desiring that every child receive a good education. His credence: be kind to one another. To curb disputes of sectionalism, why not leave children on the North Church Street corridor in Concord? After all, that is where our established neighborhood is, a vital part of the city of downtown Concord. Ms. Furtinbaugh says matter-of-factly that Beverly Hills students are very close mileage-wise to Royal Oaks. That is true, but our children live in Concord, not Kannapolis. Curiously, her community and that of Mr. Shoemaker is the same distance from Royal Oaks, and seems an equally logical choice to attend Royal Oaks, especially since Beverly Hills students have to cross over the dangerous I-85 corridor. I hold my breath every time I travel that part of Highway 29. Perhaps the best solution is to have Royal Oaks as the swing school while all the downtown schools are rebuilt. Following that time, natural growth may fill Royal Oaks. Keep the schools of old Concord viable. In our case, there is no need for land acquisition. Infrastructure is in place. We have new sidewalks and the new David Phillips Activity Center. We have common unity. We are a community. You are representatives of all of Cabarrus County. Consider what is best for the citizens of old Concord that have paid taxes to build new schools in the high-growth area for decades. We are kindly asking for our fair share. In closing, I've paraphrased some verses from Proverbs, and I applied it to our plight. "We, good people of Beverly Hills, stand firm for what is the best choice for our children and community. We invite you to reconsider your decision to close our school. It is unwise to hate being corrected. Anyone who loves knowledge would appreciate being shown right thinking. Treat our children well. Save our schools. Let's get on with it."
Okay, next, we have Diane Norwood. And the following three speakers are Jeff Swatowski, Katie Morgan, and Dave Phillips.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
If you wouldn't mind me to speak on this mic, or we'll have to flip the power. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. First of all, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Diane Norwood, and I have the privilege and honor of representing Beverly Hills as their president with a small group of officers. I look behind me and I see a lot of faces that have served as officers over many years, and so they have a legacy that we're trying to follow. Thank you, each of you, for your time and your dedication to serve on this board and represent the students of Cabarrus County. I hope all of you had a chance to read my email. Thank you, Carolyn, for the response that you got it. Thank you. I'm not going to read the email, but I'm going to talk about some of the highlights that I put in there. First of all, my email was subject, "My Request to Vote No to Close Beverly Hills." Beverly Hills is a local school that supports a diverse surrounding area, a school that has a dedicated supportive staff. They provide a strong foundation for students for future school years. Beverly Hills is a desired neighborhood. As representative of that neighborhood, I understand that homeowners retire, they downsize, they age out, and our potential buyers see a great value in having a successful local elementary school where they can volunteer and support teachers and students. In the real estate business, what's the motto? Location, location, location. This local school is the glue for the neighborhood. Residents of all ages, and our local churches, and our parks and rec community continually reach out to the students and families. Our next event, and you're the first to actually hear this officially, is August 25th, and we're going to have a back-to-school hot dog supper that we're going to have at the Beverly Hills Park. I'm going to lease some flyers, and we hope that you can all attend. Our local church has also organized and trained area residents, many which have no children or grandchildren that attend school there, to volunteer as lunch buddies, and that allows our teachers to eat lunch together, to share ideas, and to strategize. This local school is a valuable asset to our children and their families. I personally know a family that has a special needs child that attends at Beverly Hills. This small, community-centered school environment is perfect for him, and the staff help and advocate for him daily. They have invested time to actually get to know him, and he knows them. Learning new routines and trusting new people is a very difficult task for him. Please consider these children and families while you continue to go and work together to find a solution that's best for all. In my business life, I was a project manager of a large multi-million-dollar investment to build a new facility. So I know firsthand your financial decisions that you face regarding this investment. Both my employer's project and the decisions you faced all boil down to ROI, return on investment. I believe the best investment is a strong supportive school as the foundation for our children's future. Please vote no to close this school, as you continue to work together to find best solutions for the children and the families of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Jeff Swatowski? Do we have Jeff Swatowski here? He's not here?
I'll be happy to take some of his time, too.
Now, I'm sorry, we need to determine it. John, do you know who's in the other room?
I do, it is not him.
Okay.
And that person is listening out for his name, so.
Okay. So are you Katie Morgan?
I am.
Okay. You get your own three minutes. Can't come by time.
All right.
Thank you.
Dr. Lauter, if you smile, this will make it a lot easier on me. I love Beverly Hills, and I love our community. I'm proud to start with that. As a businesswoman in the healthcare industry, the task of setting aside the pulls of my heart to make ethically sound financial and operational decisions is a skill I've honed over the years. That said, I consider that I've looked at this from many angles. Still, I think we should save this school. Let's vacate the school for a year if we need to and rebuild, just like Royal Oaks, and then let's keep Beverly Hills thriving. I've looked to the community who elected this board for options that are far different from my own in order to consider the other perspectives. I've read hundreds of social media comments. Few oppose my opinion. In fact, about the most opposing comment I found was not so much in opposition, but the statement of a rather ill-informed person. But about a year ago, a comment was made in response to an Independent Tribune article that all the noise from the SOS Committee was essentially a bunch of privileged people being uptight about their privileged school being taken away and having to join the norms of the rest of the community. And when I finished my three minutes, can we just thank the Beverly Hills community, the parents and businesses, and the residents who have provided so much support that a Title I school looks privileged to those who are none the wiser? And can I remind you? Can I remind you that the leaders of the SOS Committee are not the radicals here? They're not the few strong-willed individuals and outliers. They are, in fact, our voice. Strongly consider this. Their efforts are not few in the grand scheme of things. Our entire community has relied on them to think outside of the box, and when they speak, they speak for the largest part of our community, and we support them. You came to us two years ago and said that there was really no other option but to close the school, and so fortunately, you were wrong. And the SOS team jumped through so many hoops to help shed light on other viable options. Independent parties have corrected your thought that a rebuild was not feasible. It is, and in fact, it's not as extravagant a cost as you had imagined. With that information, the tables were turned. Okay, we could feasibly accomplish this rebuild, or we could increase the teacher supplements. Do you mean to tell me that you think this community can only be either pro-Beverly Hills or pro-teacher supplements? I'm not. I can assure you that I'm one of many who support both. Teachers should not be afraid to support this school with the thought of their own care being neglected. I stand for teachers, and I stand for Beverly Hills. It is not either or. We've all seen firsthand that if we drill down and solicit advice, we can work together to achieve these goals. As board members, I expect that you are fulfilling your duties fully by coming to this meeting without a predetermined outcome and with open ears and minds. Your obligation to weigh the voices of the community so heavily so that you can respond to them with your decision tonight is not one to be taken lightly, but rest assured that if you choose to do what is best for the community, you will receive all the support you need to follow through.
So next, we have Dave Phillips. Yes. I know I saw you out there. Okay, following Mr. Phillips are Victor Gomez, Brenda Rakkoff, and Annie Schuman.
Well, good evening. My name is David Phillips. Most of you know me. I've been around a long time. And I think I'm the second-oldest speaker, right behind Scott Paget. I knew Scott would appreciate that. I'm not going to tell you things tonight you've already heard. I'm sure you've heard enough things that you've heard more than one time, so I'm going to try to take a little different approach here. After twenty years of sitting on the city council seat and a four-year break from that, it's given me a lot of time to reflect back on things. And one of the things that I've thought about during this whole process is that there is a difference, and you know this, but I want to remind you of it. There's a clear difference between someone that recommends, that is the staff, and someone that makes decisions, and that's you folks that were elected. Big difference here. So just keep that in mind as you make your decisions. I had something happen recently that you know about, and that is with the unexpected and untimely death of Sam Leader. I was asked to return to Concord City Council and felt I had an expired term. And as I took my oath of office last Thursday night, I thought about something in a different light, and I thought about the oath that I took. And the oath that I took is probably a little different from the oath that you took. The wordage is probably a little bit different, but the content and the meaning is the same. I took an oath to represent the citizens of Concord, just as you took an oath to represent the citizens of Cabarrus County. Not my personal views, not my personal preferences a lot of times, but what's best. And so I'm asking you to remember that as you make your decision and keep that in mind, because that oath is important, and to me, it's sacred, and I hope it is to you as well. You do have an important job, believe me. After twenty years of sitting on Concord City Council, I understand that. I know that. I've been in the seat like you are, where we've had some really contentious issues to deal with. We didn't always agree with our city manager. We didn't always do the same thing that the city manager recommended. There's nothing wrong with that. Decision-makers have to take the facts from the recommenders, and you make your decision based on that. And so that's important, and as you go through your deliberation and decision process, I hope you keep that in mind. Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Victor Gomez, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Victor Gomez. I moved here to Concord about twenty-four years ago from Texas. As a young man with a young son, moving to Concord, not knowing where Concord was, but my in-laws lived here, and they wanted us to be closer to them. So my father-in-law said, "Hey, I want my family close." So we decided to move to Concord, North Carolina, not knowing where it was. My friends told me, "Where are you going to live?" And I said, "Well, there's a house right behind my in-laws." And I said, "Are you crazy?" I said, "Yes, I am." So we moved to 140 Palisade, which is right across the street from the elementary school playground. Not knowing anybody other than my in-laws, we met Nancy Faggert, Dr. Fries, and they were just nice neighbors. I didn't know who they were when I moved there. I just knew Dr. Fries had his two daughters living right next to him, and they were as nice as they could be. I saw Christine grow up. She was young. I saw her growing up. Met many people that are behind me, not knowing a soul, moving here. And I became, as life went on, excuse me, let me back up. So when we were looking at the elementary school, we went and met with Mr. Paget, and we were considering Cannon School. And Mr. Paget said, "Well, I'll put my staff up against Cannon any day." And he said, "If you want to go there, that's fine, but we got a capable staff here." And so we decided to send our son to Beverly Hills, and we're glad we did. Both our children went to Beverly Hills. It's a great community. Mr. Paget said, "I got a big kick out of when I asked your son, 'Son, are you Latino or Hispanic?'" And my son said, "No, I'm not, but my dad is." He said he got a big kick out of that. But we just love Beverly Hills. It's a great community. I can name a lot of names behind me, but like I said, it's a great community. We love it, and please, please consider Beverly Hills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Rakkoff, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I applaud the commitment each of you have made to education in this great county. You have made a commitment to serve the children in our public school system, which now numbers over 32,000. Some of these children have been blessed by opportunities that provide abundantly for them, and some, on the other extreme, have experienced homelessness. Each school and each community have unique situations that you must consider when you make your decisions. We are not all the same. You must do what is right for each group while doing no harm to the other 32,000. I am asking you tonight to do what is right for the children that attend Beverly Hills Elementary School. You have been elected to represent the best interest of our children, too. Beverly Hills children are thriving in our 21st-century classrooms. Yes, a school, Dr. Lauter, that is 65 years old, can have 21st-century classrooms. A 21st-century classroom is a concept. It uses critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. These children are on a pathway for career readiness, and for many, it will be a pathway out of poverty. Please stay the course and maintain this vision. The Save Our School movement began two years ago. It gained momentum quickly. It is a legitimate and worthy cause. If it was the desire of only a few people, it would have lost steam long ago. Think of the possibilities if all schools received this level of community support. I would like to share, from the 2018 North Carolina Teacher Working Conditions Survey, 100% of teachers from Beverly Hills responded, and when asked if the community they serve is supportive of their school, 100% were in agreement. I recently participated in the school improvement team meeting at Beverly Hills. We discussed the results from the Student Satisfaction Survey, and I want you to know that 100% of Beverly Hills students feel cared for and loved by their teachers. Our community is filled with normal people. We shop at the Dollar Tree and we eat at Pizza Hut. We take our children downtown for ice cream, and many play football or volleyball at the Boys and Girls Club. Many of our students go on to become members of the Keystone Club and learn the valuable lesson of community service. I see many of them working on Pancake Day. Beverly Hills has given these young people roots in their community. I am asking you to request funding from our county commissioners for a Beverly Hills replacement school. The long-term gains are too valuable to pass up. Thank you.
So Annie Schuman?
Good evening, Board of Education. Elementary is six years of my life that I will never forget. It's six years that will hold a piece in my heart forever. But when my school was talked about being closed, it was like someone saying, "A piece in my heart will be closed," and every student feels that way. So many things went through my mind, but the one thing that stood out to me the most was, "What about us students, and how does this affect us?" Well, this is how it affects us. I can't wake up every morning and be excited about walking to school with my little brother. Beverly Hills is a place that I've known for a while, and I'm fine right where I am, where I'm loved, and where almost everyone knows my name. I feel safe at Beverly Hills, like I do at home. My teachers and principals are people I trust. Even the teachers that are not my- Even the teachers that are not my teachers know me and my parents. My Kids Plus teachers are awesome, and I don't have to get on a bus or leave school for Kids Plus. I was also taught at a very young age not to judge a book by its cover. Our school may look, may look old, like some of the others, but what is inside is what counts, just like people. I think what is inside of all of you is what counts, too, and I trust you will do what is right tonight. I trust you will do what is right for me and my friends. Because I'm in the fifth grade, I know no matter what, this is my last year at Beverly Hills, but being a fifth grader makes me feel like I need to stand up for the younger kids and speak for them, too. I had so many great experiences at Beverly Hills that I made me who I am today. I want my brother and the other kids to have those experiences, too. Some of the younger kids don't have the courage to stand up here and talk to you, so I will talk for them. They feel the exact same way I do. Keep our school open, so we don't have to change schools, change teachers, change principals, and change principals. I love Mr. Baitin and Mr. Wells, they mean the world to me. So more than anything, I just want you to know that if you do what is best for us, the students, you will never be wrong. If you don't judge a book by its cover and find out that what is inside is what matters, you won't make a bad decision. Thank you all for your time. I know you will do what is right for the students.[681.13][681.13](applause)
Before Mrs. Schuman begins, because you're next, I just want to say the next three are Jim Fulton, Marshall Ward, and Joshua Kane. Okay, you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you again for allowing us to speak tonight. I've really enjoyed the comments that everyone has made tonight, and I really wanted to talk to you this evening about some of the life lessons that our kids have learned, like perseverance, passion, and advocacy. These are the lessons that this community has taught our children over the last two years during this fight for Beverly Hills. Our children have watched their community coalesce, as it has for the last 65 years, to once again advocate for the needs of their wonderful elementary school. But this time, the advocacy wasn't to put books on the library shelves or build playground equipment. This time, it's for the salvation of the school. So let's talk about activism. The children have seen the SOS yard signs and the parade floats, the community meetings and the letters to the editor. They've heard so much positive rhetoric, from the supportive speeches at meetings like the one here tonight, to discussion among neighbors in their communities and even chats around their dinner tables. They've experienced firsthand what it means to take up a cause and to lobby for it, and what a blessing for them to have had exposure to this important lesson so early in their young lives, when many adults have never experienced and experienced it themselves. Ironically, on the way here tonight, the song "Teach Your Children Well" by Crosby, Seals and Nash came on my radio, and it just kind of reminded me, I'm like, that's what we're here to do, we're here to teach the children. And so we've talked about these life lessons. I think now it's time for us together to teach them some new lessons, like unity and partnership and collaboration, working together for a common goal. So what do I mean? Well, this diverse group of Beverly Hills supporters is passionate and inspired and motivated to be a catalyst for great things at Beverly Hills, just like the supporters have done for the last 65 years. This group is ready. Are you ready? Are you ready to take this to the next level together? Now is the time to show our children and everyone how a group of strong civic leaders can successfully partner with intensely passionate advocates and create incredible momentum and change. The folks that are here tonight represent a mere fraction of the Cabarrus County residents who support Beverly Hills, and they're ready to get to work. But let me assure you that a decision to keep Beverly Hills isn't nursing nostalgia, but rather a way to harness the talent and the energy and the resources of this invested and engaged group of community advocates. Let's do this now and set the stage for the dynamic impetus that will follow. Get ready for the legacy that you will leave on this county and the children for the next 65 years. Thank you so much for your time.[883.01][883.01](applause)
Jim Fulton? Jim Fulton? Oh, there you are. I'm looking up here more.
William Fisher.
It's not your turn yet. Let me see if I have your name in here. I don't see you signed up.
I thought you called it out.
No, I said Mr. Fulton.
I'm sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair Superintendent, members of the, of the board. Cabarrus County deserves both well-paid teachers and a variety of educational options for its students, including the preservation of all of our small community schools. It's unfortunate that eliminating the operational budget for Beverly Hills has been linked to the funding for teacher supplements, because one does not need to be at the expense of the other. We can have both. That these have been pitted against one another is especially distressing, because it appears to me this is nothing more than a contrivance intentionally devised to deprive Beverly Hills of an operational budget, and so achieve the goal of closing the school through surreptitious means rather than by participating in an honest and forthright debate on the merits of keeping the school open. As Mrs. Carpenter reminded the board in the last work session, funding for the supplements for next year, while not sustainable on an ongoing basis, can be paid out of the reserve fund. The operational budget must adjust to meet future needs of the school system in next year's budget cycle anyhow, regardless of teacher supplements, and these supplements, together with the teachers and the rest of us, can go back to the county for funding. It's their obligation to pay our teachers, and to shift that burden onto the school board, onto you folks, and expect the district to do more with less on the backs of our children and by damaging our communities, is an abrogation of their responsibility, and I for one am happy to remind them of that. As Mayor Paget has said, let's get on with it. Fund teacher supplements, reverse the vacate, and get a new school for this site on the Capitol plant. It's as simple as that. Thank you all very much.
Marshall Ward?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marshall Ward. Who and why? Who and why is a big question. Also, as a community, it would be more desirable to be defined by that which unites us, other than that which divides us. Who am I and why am I here? My name's Marshall Ward. I'm not a parent of a Beverly Hills child. I'm a coach of a Beverly Hills child. I'm a friend to their parent. I'm a member of the community. These kids go to my church, and I care about them deeply. Likewise, I'm a neighborhood school advocate. My kids go to Coltrane Webb Elementary School. That's the school where my wife went to. There's a lot of things that were said tonight, and I don't want to take up too much time, but there's some things that were really important that need to be reiterated. One of those was what Mayor Paget said earlier about when we started looking at, we could either fund teacher supplements or rebuild a school. I thought I was in Oz when I heard that. I didn't understand where we were coming from. I didn't think that was even an option. I had to see it in print on the screen before I believed that was even real. I thought the person was misquoting something when they were telling me this. I don't know how we got there. A couple of other things, my buddy Scott and Brian, they are products of this community and these community schools. And then they go out in the world, but what do they do? They come back. You know what we call those guys? They're called boomerang kids. Send them out in the world, but they come right back, and why? Because they believe in what we have going on here. They believe in what this board and this past boards have created here, community schools. I'm a product of a community school, just not here. I'm a product of a community school in South Carolina, but I loved it. I loved walking to school every day. When I'm a, when I became a home buyer, 2011, I could have gone anywhere in the country. I had job offers all over. We chose Concord because I was working a 60, 70-hour grind week, where I didn't see my kids hardly at all. And I chose to move to Concord and move to the historic district, where I could walk my kids to school every day and pick them up and walk them home. It's a part of my identity. It's something I love to do. It's something I cherish. There is a, there's a huge factor in property values, too, of walkability scores, when it comes to having neighborhood schools in the neighborhood. It improves property values, and that's how we can all work together here, with the school board and the county commissioner and the city of Concord. Obviously, we'd like our property types to be hired to fund different things, so we could fund different things, and if, if our property values go down, we will not be able to have that. It'll impact the, the value of properties. But who and why? We should be defined by that which unites us and not which divides us. It is no question, if you've driven around the South Union Historic District, or the North Union Historic District, or Beverly Hills, how many signs like this you see in our yards? And you'll keep seeing them no matter what happens at Coltrane Webb, or Beverly Hills, or Arbound McAllister, because we are all Beverly Hills, because we're all united to
So our next speaker is Joshua Kane? And that's you, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the speakers after that are Lee Schuman, Michael T. Smith, Leanna Littlefield, and Quinton Locklear. And that is the end of the speakers at that point. So welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chair, distinguished board members. I'd like to start by first acknowledging the countless hours of so many in our community and on this board that have remained objective over these last two years. As elected members of our community, I proudly call upon each of you to act on what we in the Beverly Hills community, as well as those and so many additional supporters throughout Cabarrus County, have called for, a veto to vacate our beloved school. I'm a husband and father of three amazing children, ages two, three, and six. Like so many families in our growing county, thoughts of where our children will be educated in the years to come have always weighed heavily. Cherished neighbors and friends have always been open with their past experiences and a more personal education, and to this day, talk of closely formed relationships, as you've heard here tonight. With this premise, my wife and I made a decision to relocate from within Cabarrus County just two years ago, as we believed both then and now that Beverly Hills is the best for our family. We fully support and feel it is best interest of every child, excuse me, to have the experience of a smaller, community-based school. I'd like to add that my wife and I could have purchased many wonderful homes throughout the county at less cost and in far better condition. However, we sacrificed for the opportunity once again to send our children to Beverly Hills. In preparation for elementary school, it was recommended by Cabarrus County school staff that our oldest son in preschool at the time, if any way possible, should attend BH. Why? Because it was best for his style of learning. No two children are the same. I'm proud to share with you that among his many achievements, a few months prior to completion of kindergarten this past school year, he's already reading at a second-grade level. There is no doubt in my heart and soul that this is a direct result of the educational environment of Beverly Hills, and of course, the incredible educators at that school. One final item I'd like to share is my personal experiences with the All-Pro Dads Group at Beverly Hills. Both myself and my son have attended these meetings. They provide hands-on opportunities, and we've learned life lessons that strengthened our relationship with one another, as well as with those in our school and community. Bringing together various backgrounds of not only students, but dads, was an eye-opening experience for me. We were provided the opportunity to speak openly, share ideas, which in turn contributed to an active, engaged community. Lessons always closed with a take-home message for further discussion and self-development of all ages. In closing, the Beverly Hills community has deep roots, and we, like our state, are Carolina strong. Students, parents, and neighbors alike have demonstrated that this perseverance to be heard. Yes, emotions have undoubtedly been a part of our journey, but more importantly, our community has remained objective and performed due diligence in our responses for why the right vote is obvious. Again, I ask you, please veto the vacate for our beloved school. Thank you very much for your time.[1442.11][1442.11](applause)
Mr. Schuman?
Good evening.
Good evening. Pardon me, I'm not feeling well tonight, so my voice may crack a little. Good evening, Dr. Louder, and the Board of Education. The passion that's been displayed in this room tonight is palpable. It's evidenced by hundreds of emails that you've received over two years, the numerous presentations and data that has been sent by our SOS group, the numerous articles in the Tribune, countless letters submitted to the editor, evidenced by almost 5,000 signatures to our petition, support from doctors and healthcare professionals, thousands of social media posts and yard signs, all expressing support. The support of current and past community leaders, current and past students of Beverly Hills and their parents, older community leaders with children and grandchildren that have gone to this school, older community leaders with no children, but passionate about what is best for their city and community. The question is, what will you do with this passion? Passion is the foundation of commitment. It's the structure for which hard work is built upon. It's distilled into pure energy. Passion fuels our willingness to sacrifice, so our actions have purpose, so our reasons have meaning, and so learning, even learning and failure, has a profound influence on our journey towards accomplishment. Passion alone, though, is not enough. It must be harnessed, channeled, turned into energy, and ultimately into action. Passion without action is wasting time, and we can't waste any more time. There's work to do. Passion not used for these gains is simply wasting the most critical natural resource and human currency that we have. If we can teach our children anything, we should teach them to be passionate, to harness it, channel it, apply the energy that it generates to change the world for the better, to lead others, and teach those less fortunate that passion has no cost, it's free. The passion that you see displayed tonight is not contrived, it's not planned or choreographed, it's natural and organic, and it's essential to the success of our school system. The type of support that we have here tonight is dreamed about, by companies, by governments, by churches, by nonprofits, and certainly by schools. What will you do with this passion? Will you harness it? Will you channel it and use it for gain? Or will we waste it? Stomp on it, and therefore waste more time that could be spent accomplishing our goals rather than dousing out the flames of these passionate people? Action. Take action tonight. Use our passion, it's free. Use it to move our school system forward. Use it as support for the decisions that you have to make. Use it as energy to lead others. We aren't just passionate about our 400 students, we're passionate about the thousands of students that have come through the halls of Beverly Hills Elementary School for 65 years. The past leaders of this community have showed us how to be committed. Reading the stories in yesterday's paper about parents making lunch for students when the school had no cafeteria, and parents planting trees on the property, and businesses building playgrounds, that is inspirational. My late neighbor's Mr. Howard and his wife Sarah Jane, who taught school at Beverly Hills, made this community home for decades. Mr. Howard was affectionately known as the mayor of Beverly Hills. He lived there for decades, and he was known as the mayor because his passion was infectious. If you ever met him, you know what I'm talking about. Many people in this room do. It wore off on everyone that he met. He was the first one to welcome me to the community, walked up my driveway, out of breath, and said, glad to meet you. Others have showed us what passion, when turned into action, can do for a community and for a school and for its children. Allow us to show future generations how to lead, how to harness passion into energy and energy into action. Just give us that chance. Vote to put Beverly Hills on the Capitol Plan, vote to reverse the vacate, and join us, working together to better this community. The thousands of kids that will grace the halls of Beverly Hills Elementary School for the next 65 years will thank you for it, and they'll thank future boards when they come back to talk to them. Passion is believing. Acting on that passion is achieving. One doesn't work without the other. Let's get on with it.
Michael T. Smith?
I'm Michael T. Smith.
Yeah, welcome.
I sure am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Louder, the board. Some of you might know my face, some of you may not, but that's okay, you'll know it after tonight.[1798.71][1798.71](laughter) You'll know it after tonight. A lot of people, they were talking about boomerang and going back. I was born here. I was raised there, and I haven't left here. I live here in Concord. I will visit anywhere in the United States or anywhere in the world, but after about four days, I come back to Concord, because I love Concord. So to tell you who I am, I'm from the Logan Community. I was bused to Beverly Hills Elementary School, and I love Beverly Hills Elementary School. I went to Beverly Hills Elementary, Concord Middle, and Concord High. Yeah, I am part of Spidey Nation. I was the first to win a conference championship for Easly Smith. And go class of 1984. Matter of fact, we're getting ready to celebrate our 35th class reunion in about five months, four months. So I'm very proud. So to let you all know, I'm a retired fire captain with the city of Concord. Thank you, I got to serve under Mayor Pageant as a retired fire captain with the city of Concord, and I state that I really love this city. So with that said, I was asked by my classmate, "Mike, you need to get up there and talk." And my wife would probably tell me to sit down if she was here right now, but I got a chance to speak, and I got three minutes, and I want to share. A friend of mine that went to Beverly Hills Elementary School by the name of Max White sent this to me. He said, "Mike, please go." And he said, "That experience brought us all together in a very profound way going to Beverly Hills Elementary School. It personally shaped our entire lives with perspective of race relations during that time." We were being bused. I was, you know, five, six years old, going to this school, thought I was going to actually probably be able to go to the Logan Community School, but guess, I got bused to Beverly Hills, and it was the best six years of my life. My aunt was my first-grade teacher. I couldn't do nothing wrong at all, and her name was Maisella Steele, and that was my mom's younger sister. So with that being said, I know my time has come to an end. Please make the right decision. Please do not close Beverly Hills Elementary School. It made me who I am. And also, I am one of the 68 students that got to go to see President Carter. Yes. Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome.
Well, I came here tonight to see what was going to happen. I did not plan on speaking to you guys, so thank you for listening to everyone and being very patient. So I went to Beverly Hills with Mike. We started there in 1972. I grew up in Beverly Hills neighborhood, right on Hill and Dale Street, and we walked to school every day. You know, my best friend was the patrol, you know, the, should we stand out there? What was it? The safety patrol. And I was so jealous, because she got to go stand and stop traffic. Can you imagine letting our kids do that now? Anyway, I just wanted to say that Beverly Hills, it's part, I mean, it's such a neighborhood school to me is just so important. I've been friends with Mike for, like, what, 50 years now going, well, 40-some, anyway. But all of these people, like, we were on a text, a group text the other night, and we're planning our reunion for high school, and a bunch of the people that are on this committee, we all went to Beverly Hills together and we're talking about the school, and everybody, like Max, was chiming in saying, "It impacted my life." And I know that it's still doing that with students today, and I just want to ask you to please, you know, keep it around. It's worth it. I know you have all the budgets and all the things that you have to make decisions about, but the kids really, they will benefit, and it will benefit our community so much. It will continue to benefit the community to keep it open, so thank you.
And next we have Quentin Locklear.
Thank you. Thank you, board, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Quentin Locklear, born and raised in Concord, North Carolina, along with my older sister and brother. We went to the community schools here in town, had a great experience. Older sister, Dartmouth. Older brother, Duke. I brought up the rear end. Dr. Lauter, you and I went to the same school. I had to go to that cheap school, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Gave my parents a bit of a break. My father made me feel better by telling me it was public Ivy. With that being said, there really is a benefit to these schools. My parents weren't academically gifted. We got our foundation from our community schools. It's just as simple as that. I really do ask you to consider vacating to leave, keep these schools alive. People are moving to Concord, they're calling it the modern-day Mayberry. That's what I hear people say. They are correct. People are rejecting Charlotte. They're moving for here because of what we have. This recipe works. Let's don't change the recipe. Let's keep it running the way it is. Thank you all.
Okay, board members, we had talked about taking a brief recess. I think the Capitol Plan is going to be longer than 20 minutes. I think so. So you want to take that now, and then we'll come back and start in the Capitol Plan and all. Okay, so it is 7:38, 7:48. Let's make it 10 minutes and be back here. Eat your seats. Thank you.